The Utility Board Public Meeting for March 15, 2022 is called Order. Please stand for the flag of allegiance.
Stand.
The flag of allegiance.
Goodbye, United States of America, and to the freedom of the public for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great freedom and justice of our heart.
Thank you. Move call please, Michael.
Robert Conahan.
Here.
John Foreman's absent. Julie Rivera. Karen Caleph Miller.
Present.
Randall Lemire.
Present.
Colin Sheehan here. Richard Char.
Here.
Jennifer Sandberg, absent. I'm Margot O'Meggy. She's Kevin Exler. Chris Aladdin.
Present.
David.
Present.
Begin tonight under new business, Holy Name Church, municipal water request. Does anybody here there want to speak on this, Father, and Wayne, please?
Thank you so very much for inviting us or allowing us to be part of the meeting. During that, I had come to Cedar Lake in July of last year, and one of the things that were happening at the parish is this whole water drainage issue, and we've been taken care of. And now we want to address another issue, which is water for the school. The letter that you received, or that Randy Barick received, was a letter asking for us to allow this water to come to us. And it was before we had an opportunity to, I guess, to study more closely what we considered to be the ordinances, or at least what was considered the ordinance. We were told that in order for water to be brought to the school, we needed to tap in at 133rd and Schneider all the way to the end of our property. And with that in mind, I composed this letter asking that there would be a variance, that it would be just to the point of entrance into the school. The reason we are asking for water is that we have installed the new wall well, but we've also had experience of having it always test positive, pass all the tests. When the water test fails, we have a program there of preschoolers, grand tots, that has made a difficulty for their program. So we are not at this point of coming to the close of the sewer, storm sewer, storm water runoff project, and we said, if we can, we need to bring water in so that we do not have to trudge through that again once it's been paved and things of that nature. So that's the letter. Looking at the ordinance as we read it, I read it, we were wondering, is that what we need to do, bring water all the way from 133rd to our property? It seems to say here, and this is on section E, Water Distribution Section, the location?
They have a copy of it.
They have a copy of it. Okay, thank you. It seems that the beginning of our property would be our responsibility to the point of entrance. So we come before you asking for clarification and also the possibility of having water that would be brought to the school. Wayne, do you have a few other?
Thank you, Father.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Oh, he knows I'm going to have a few other things. Never, if you never see the look. Come on, Wayne. I understand as we read that last page, it says that the, we got this written down, it says, "A hydrant shall be placed on dead end and water mains. Water mains shall extend to the subdivision or property boundary line and shall be located in a public right-of-way or an easement." And as it looks, if you look, you'll see where, when you pull in Schneider, we have town water in the church, okay? But school's a different address, and we were told back then that we could not catch the school into that range, which makes sense, okay? If you look, if you drive in Schneider, which if you look at the page, you'll see classes' house on the side, in a way this reads from the property line, where our property line is ahead of classes. So what we're asking is, can we, will pay for the water line from 133rd and put in the sidewalk, and of course, we want to put water and put a hydrant, we'll pay to put it on Schneider, on classes, up to our property line, and then take it to the point of our school. You'll see how long our property is, in a way we read this, and when you come in, it's the property line. And someone said, you go, "Property line, property line," but that's not what this reads the way we're reading it. It says, "To our property line," but the water line is not there now, so not to repeat myself, but we want to take it from 133rd, we'll put in the sidewalk and whatever requirements are. There's a box there, and I don't know what size it is, whether it's the right size to go, or if that goes to classes' house. I'm not sure what that line goes to. But if need be, metros are on site now. We got construction everywhere, and we got a parking lot all four of them. So this water line, no matter what, is going to have to go through our parking lot. We're trying not to duplicate that. And as Father said, we've got the water issue, it tests negative. Well, we got 100 kids there, and it's a daycare, it's not a school, obviously, and we don't have a referendum go-to or anything like that, but at that new time, and 100 people, 100 little kids, they got to have their parents come and get their kids, they got to leave work and all that. It's just, we got the well, we did everything everybody said to do, and it's just on testing rate. It's down like 300 feet, I think, something like that. But, you know, we've been here since 1913, we're not going anywhere. It's a vacant field north of us. You can see the distance in them. It's just not equal, but our whole property line, then if you back it up and include classes, not actually the town's classes' property, we're in the range, but there's nothing in that field, there's four houses out there, and, you know, it just, right now, we're just into, we've been saving, the church has been saving for years, putting pocket money for $320,000 where the range. And where we're at right now is, when we finish this project, all of our storm water will be going into where the town has directed it to be. And we got tiles in the ground the same size as in 133rd. So I think we're good stewards for the town. We got a shared interest. I mean, people drive in Cedar Lake, and if they come from 41, you know, they can't miss us. Like you say, we're not going, we're 1913.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir.
Can you, can we ask the town manager for his analysis of this request and what our current policies state as it relates to this type of project?
First, could you speak to this? Thank you.
I'll have to defer to Dave on the interpretation of the policy, but as far as preference towards development, it's preferred to put the water line through the entirety of the property. I understand that it's an open field at this time, and the church is very well likely not going anywhere in a very foreseeable future or even distant future. However, there are developments that could happen north of there and have happened north of there that lead to the possibility of looping the water system, which is the preference throughout water utilities to keep water flowing through it. And it's my understanding in talking with Tim that there's a water line coming south behind the Dodge dealership, correct?
Correct. It comes up to the head U-Lock storage currently.
That will, with development in that area, connect the two water lines together to provide a loop on that side of the town, in that isolated area.
So would that feed 41, then?
Well, it would actually tie 133rd water main to 129th.
Yeah, several years ago, the town did a project to stub the water at 129th, and then there was another project done by a private developer to take it a little further to the south, and Altoff ran the mains to the north to Birchwood subdivision. So we're getting really close to that looping, which I know is also desirable for the fire department from a fire suppression standpoint as well. And all I'm wanting to do here is to get an idea of, okay, Wayne has an interpretation of the policy, what is the reality of the policy and how it's applied to this sort of request? Dave?
The language is mandatory in the town's codes that there be an extension and that looping occur. Extension to the subdivision or property boundary line is the language and it's mandatory language. That's how it's been interpreted also, and everything you've described, Randy, Tim, and Chris, about the looping and the long-term plans of the town are in fact accurate, very accurate. 129th was done with the intent to allow a monastery north to develop and to extend our water main to Route 41. It was intended that there be an intersection with a north-south water main, so the corridor, the highway corridor and inner available properties to be developed, could be developed on the town's water supply system. The improvement on the east side of the automobile dealership, in fact, is there and was planned for the reason of looping and supply. And it was anticipated, in fact, that developer had talked with the town about participating in the looping extension south to Schneider Street or south down Schneider Street, but that did not end up happening, at least to this point in time. So all of the language of our codes and regulations are mandatory about that, and that's what the language says.
But we could deviate from that, couldn't we?
You are the utility board, you have legal authority to do what you think is appropriate.
But then if that development did come in, now it's hypothetical, but did come into the north, we could end up with another stub.
You have issues of easements and access and extended.
So we'd end up with basically two dead-end streets at that point.
We kind of had that on Great Oaks Drive, where the water main was not extended, notwithstanding some understanding that it would occur to Route 41. We wanted to sub, subline part partly of Great Oaks Drive without being completed to its planned terminus at Route 41, right by the Knights of Columbus Hall.
So then it wouldn't go to 41, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that's what the game plan was when that developer was here, who developed the U-Locks where the Great Oaks Theater was.
Tim?
The new orders for the property, the two parcels to the west of the U-Locks, actually was intending on doing something to out to 41, that they have planned to extend their water main to the 41 down Great Oaks Drive now, shortly.
The looping thing, I don't understand what you're saying there. So if that came out on those lots on Great Oaks, across the street from the KSCs, those people would have to pay for that water line coming through to make that build, to come up to our north property line?
Well, they were our responsible to put it from the U-Locks out to 41 in order to build on those parcels.
So there would be some?
So water would be to Great Oaks Drive, essentially the main would be right there. So from your property to that main is a pretty short distance, you're only looking at 300 feet probably.
If they got to 41, wouldn't that be a loop if they went south and got to, because of the water line, right? The last place now is at McDonald's, right? That's the last fire, I guess.
Comes out to McDonald's and then heads south.
Right.
And then it comes out to 129, and it heads north before 41 and then goes up through. So basically that, I mean, if we could get it down Schneider to Great Oaks Drive, that would connect that. that would connect that following main from the water tower, that would create a circle all the way around, so you would be getting water from both directions.
Would it be a chance that, because forty-one's going to develop like everything else, that that loops in with one hundred and thirty-third?
Um, anything is possible.
Yeah, anything possible. Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying.
It's just like that's our closest, I mean, right now with that, with that, once that main goes to forty-one at Great Oaks Drive, between one hundred and thirty-third and Great Oaks Drive to connect, to make that big circle around, which would be huge for...
The intent of the policy, correct me if I'm wrong, is basically so that each property that accesses the town's water utility and installs water main, installs that to the end of their property, so that if there is another connection to be made, that person doesn't have to try to encroach on your property to make that connection.
Mm-hmm.
And we had this recently with Father John at Saint Michael the Archangel, where he wanted us to waive this policy, uh, as well, um, because he was going to have to lay some water main along one hundred and thirty-third at a, you know, it's a substantial cost.
Mm-hmm.
And at that time, the, I, I want to say this, before we had the utility board in place, the council had made the decision to not allow that to happen, because then he ended up having to drill another well, because his well had gone bad, like what you're describing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so it's, the policy's there for the purpose of the totality of the utility and to make sure that in the future, nobody has to come to Holy Name and say, "Hey, we need to jump onto your property to do this." And, uh, so that's the difficult part of this.
So then what, what is the possibility of getting water? Is there any possibility of getting water from the town? I, I mean, with all of these groupings, whatever, and wherever it comes off, and what is the possibility, or is there no possibility at this time? And we need to look at some other types of improvements in the building for taking care of our water, so that it's always testing negative.
Where's our nearest main, Tim, to?
That, that is the nearest main, it's the one thirty-third and Snyder.
And Snyder? Then I would say it's very possible for them to get water from the town.
Absolutely. Yeah, they'd have to install that main, though.
Just have to install that main.
That, and that's not on our property, it's on the town's, and we're okay with that. We just want to bring it to the school for now, uh, we're, we're...
Whose property would you have to go through to get it from Snyder Street and one hundred and thirty-third to your...
Classes, and which is really in the easement right there. There's already a sidewalk there.
Right away.
So it's, it's in the public right-of-way?
There, with, yeah, I call it a sidewalk to nowhere. The stop sign where you pull out of Snyder, if you look over here, the gate valve's there and the sidewalk's there.
So if it's in the public easement lane, I would think that all you would have to do is get permission from the town, is that correct, to access that easement and then repair it in the way that it was when you found it, and then finish the water main as it states in our standard? Am I correct in that interpretation?
So, so why, why would we have to incur, uh, uh, incur the cost from one thirty-third, which, and to the beginning of our property, which is not our property? I mean, I can understand if, if the ordinance is during our property, you know, so at the beginning of it to the end of it, but why a portion that is not ours?
So I'll answer your question with a question, Father.
Okay.
Um, who should pay for that, then?
Well, if it's the water, the town's water, isn't it the responsibility of the town? I, I don't, the town...
But is the town pursuing the main extension or is Holy Name?
So it all has to do with who's pursuing the use of it?
Yeah, if somebody wants to access the water that's there, that's the infrastructure that belongs to the town, then, you know, we can provide the access and provide access to the public easement, but then you have to create the connection.
I hope in a certain sense, you're not interested in getting everybody on the town's water.
That's not true at all.
Well, I mean, if we, if that isn't our property and we'd like the water...
We have the water right there, close to you, to be able to access it. But it's not necessarily the responsibility of the utility to pay for that extension to get to your property.
Okay.
It's, it's not that we don't want customers, it's just the utility has taken, um, a policy initiative since its inception, that we don't force people to hook up, nor can, can people force the town to hook up for them. So it's, it's kind of a, a freedom thing in both ways. So you have the option, obviously, to drill a well, but it's problematic. The water utility of the town would be, you know, a lot of communities, when there's a water utility close to your property, have certain ordinances that compel you to hook up to it. We don't do that. It's, so it's, it's a give and take, Father, where, you know, you can be aggressive with things, or you can be, "Hey, we want you to be a part of this, but here's what you gotta do to get it."
Can I ask a question, too? I want to throw something in there. I'm, I'm hearing that Holy Name is willing to go from the school through the easement to one hundred and thirty-third to hook up to the water. Okay. And that, but if they do that, then they have to go all the way in the vast, to the, to the other end of their property?
That's the way the policy is written.
To one hundred and twenty-nine, yeah.
That's the way it, it's written?
Yes. So that, and, and that's exactly what we enforced when Father John came for a very similar request.
Now, all that I was doing was trying to be clear that they will, they will go, go out and get the water, but then, then the ordinance says they have to go all the way to the end of their property with the water that they got.
Yeah. Well, if we can go on your land to get to the water, if someone north of us wants water, they can come to our main, right? Can we pass that on?
Well, I look at, I, it's like a, a problem system. We, we don't have any governance of how you, um, how you govern your own private property. So while, while Wayne and, and Father here could say, "You know what, we'd be great partners to work with somebody." There's going to be people after you that may not do it the same way. Well, you won't encroach on our private property? So the town's ordinance is there to take that out of the play, is that if you go to the end of your property, property line, then there is no encroachment.
Well, we're paying forward by getting the water in the easement. Why can't that apply to the guy, the next guy north that would want water from on in?
Because we can't govern your private property interactions with your neighbors.
Oh, no, we would handle that.
Right, but what I'm saying is that our policy only governs what we do.
What, uh, uh, another theoretic, uh, theoretic, uh, what would happen if, say, one of the homes beyond us wanted to get water?
They couldn't go through your property right now.
I'm sorry?
I said they would not be able to go through your property unless they could extend it down a public easement that's currently existing. This is an easement.
Snyder right-of-way is existing, so they can take it all the way down.
But they would have to pay for the whole, the whole extension and then still extend it to the end of their property.
What about, if you've got water at Holy Name Church, can they take it from there and go over to the school?
You've got city water at Holy Name Church?
We have a new inch line.
I don't know how that...
No, because they'd just be crossing the public right-of-way with the service line, then.
Cause then it couldn't be accessed.
That's only, I mean, that two-inch line is adequate for the church and probably the rectory building, but that's...
Well, we can put that line in.
We also have a water expert here who's done a lot of this engineering, Neil. What is your thoughts here?
The voice of the utility board and attorney Austin are correct. The extension to the boundary line of the property is consistent with what all of our policies have been in the past, and the guidance and direction to extend those mains, so that the last person that extended their main, or the town extended their main, for the ability for that connection, provides for the next person to be able to provide that extension.
And that's what we're trying to do. If, if, if it says extend it to, sub, extend to the subdivision or property boundary line, but that is our boundary line, we're going to extend it to that boundary line, and what we're asking for is...
You're talking about the one to the south, though.
Right.
That's correct, and then run it to the school. That is our, it does say boundary lines, it says boundary line.
Well, that boundary line could be either boundary line, couldn't it?
Well, it doesn't, well, I'm reading it, boundary line. It says it's spelled out anything other than that.
So what does that mean, Dave?
Can't, can't, can't change the word. It does say boundary line.
It would mean all the boundary lines.
North, southeast, or west?
Yes, sir.
That's a, that, that's an interpretation, correct? I would say that's ordinance, because I'm not reading that.
But boundary line could, could mean any boundary line, so you're going for one boundary line, that doesn't mean that it's...
That's right, it could mean either one, and that's...
The idea of a boundary line. But...
Well, we can afford it, that's for sure.
I, I think that, you know, the, the town would definitely be willing to give you access to that easement to be able to run the main. It's, I mean, I, I tell you, I remember sitting here and, and having the same plea from Father John. He wanted to hook to where Faith Church had taken their water utility right to the end of their, uh, property, but, uh, wanted to skip the steps, and it wasn't allowed. So we, we kinda have a precedent to this when it relates to this policy. It's not that we don't want people to have water, it's just that we don't force them to, and also, we don't put it on our ratepayers to be responsible for the cost of extending mains, um, because it's, it's not fair to them, who are already paying for it, that we're investing their money to benefit someone else.
Well, thank you so very much for listening to us and hearing us and allowing us to...
No, thank you for coming. Is it a new well? Is it a brand-new well or is it an older well?
No, it's brand-new.
And you just can't get it to...
Well, there are times in which the well tests.
Okay.
It doesn't pass all, all tests. I mean, we'd have to take water from five, four or five different strips.
Sure, sure.
And, uh, right now, there is possibly, there is one or two, on occasion, that, uh, tests. So, so we'll continue to work at this, we'll, we'll get this further, and, and if we do decide that we need to come back to you here for this, to this group, or what?
If, if you're going to access the easement, it would be going through the, um...
Council.
The, the town offices first.
And the town offices would be who?
Our town manager, Chris.
Okay.
So he would be your first point of contact on this, and then we could put together action items that would, uh, make that possible.
Okay. All righty. Thank you so very much.
Thank you so much for coming on.
Gentlemen, thank you. Appreciate it.
Have a good day. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
So we need to take action on this, right?
We do. We do need to take action.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on the, uh, water request as submitted to be denied.
Motion by Randy?
Nobody wants to second a denial of God. This, this, we're only that holy. Listen, I'm, I'm praying that we don't get struck by lightning here, but this is just a procedure. Leave it on me. Yeah, thank you.
You're not going to be struck by lightning.
Not to hide any hope.
Wayne, Wayne doesn't claim that same thing.
You'll leave that door open, like, you know, aside that boundary line.
Crickets are chirping in here.
I guess I'll be the second bad guy in the second year of my...
Second by Julie. Roll call, Margot?
Robert Carnan?
No.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Randy Wehmer?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan?
No.
Ralph Miller?
I have to have stayed from voting, I'm a member of the church.
Andrew Chark?
Yes. Motion carries three, six...
Actually, it doesn't carry.
Without the majority, no.
You didn't have four.
Doesn't carry.
Carry it over to next month.
I'll make a motion to defer.
I'll second.
Roll call, Margot?
Robert Carnan?
Yes.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Randy Wehmer?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan?
Yes.
Richard Chark?
Yes. Motion to defer, all carries six, zero. To next month, is that where we're deferring it to?
Correct.
Okay, to next month.
That was a nice play, Wayne.
Yeah, yeah, boy, you scared some people, dude.
Got in the one head, huh? GOT in the one head.
Oh, I love it.
Okay. Number two, Dixon Proposal for Engineering and Inspection Services for the East Side Elevated Storage Tank. Neil, you wanna...
Yes, this is for, uh, the elevated tank at Crystal Oaks. Uh, Dixon Engineering is, um, a company the town has worked with for, over the past decade, and their scope of work, as defined in their agreement, uh, is in a not-to-exceed amount of sixty-two thousand dollars, and that covers their work regarding inspection of the steel, the inspection of the facility that it's, um, produced in, the erection, the welds, the testing, the x-rays, and the internal and external coating inspection for that tower. The representative that we have from Dixon is local, he is in town, and, um, he's worked with the Public Works Department on, on several recent projects and will continue to, on this one.
And sixty-two thousand is not to exceed?
Not to exceed, correct.
Thank you. You've heard the explanation of the Dixon proposal, do we have a motion to, uh, to approve the Dixon proposal for engineering services for the East Side Elevated Storage Tank?
So moved.
Motion by Randy?
I'll second.
Second by Ralph. Roll call, Margot?
Robert Carnan?
Yes.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Randy Wehmer?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Richard Chark?
Yes, motion carries six, zero. Okay. Now, Neese Construction Proposal for Construction Engineering, East Side Elevated Water Storage Tank.
This is our proposal regarding coordinating the work by Caldwell Tanks, um, with Dixon and AES regarding, uh, the site work, coordinating the pay requests, um, the, the work in addition to now only what was in the contract, but the, the additional coordination of the, um, SCADA and additional communications that the Public Works and, uh, the IT Department are interested, and that covers the, the work for Dixon and the, uh, and our work associated with that.
Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
Is there a not-to-exceed, or did you say that, or do I...
It's forty-two thousand five hundred not-to-exceed.
Okay.
Yes.
You've heard the explanation, uh, from Neil, do we have a motion to approve the Neese Construction Proposal for Construction Engineering, East Side Elevated Water Storage Tank, not to exceed forty-two five?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Colleen?
I'll second.
Second by Ralph. Roll call, please, Margot?
Robert Carnan?
Yes.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Randy Wehmer?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Richard Chark?
Yes, motion carries six, zero. Number four, AES Proposal for Soils Foundation via Technical Testing Work, East Side Elevated Water Storage Tank. Neil?
This is, um, for the soils consultant. The, uh, AES Oktar did the initial, um, soil work at the site and the subsequent work when we, um, considered, uh, moving the tower slightly to the, uh, to the north. And I, I talked with, uh, Art last week, and we prepared this, uh, in terms of the schedule that has been preliminary submitted by Caldwell Tanks for the project, and it'll, it'll be the compaction of the site, the foundation, the analysis, concrete, the cylinders, testing of that, um, to be able to get the tower out of the ground.
Question, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So is the site of the tower still going to be where we had discussed and agreed upon after the meetings with the residents?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, and that's just north of where it would originally going to be?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion to approve for the AES Proposal for Soils Foundation via Technical Testing Work?
So moved.
Motion by Randy?
I'll second.
Second by Julie. Margot, roll call?
Robert Carnan?
Yes.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Randy Wehmer?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Richard Chark?
Yes, motion carries six, zero. Number five, Neese Construction Proposal for Construction Engineering, East Side Transmission Bank. Neil?
This is for the... This is for the east side transmission main, which will connect the Paradise Cove production facility, which was recently acquired last year, to the southwest corner of what is being considered as Lakeside South. We've been in coordination with the developer on that project for them to extend their water main through Lakeside, Lakeside Two, Lakeside South down to 141st to their southwest property. And actually just today, I don't know, Rick, if you saw the email, we did get our facility's construction permit for item for this project and we are working with Public Works on the Paradise Cove facility with Orpman, who's doing the well test on that project. So we can make the improvements on that site for not only the well production facility, but the hydrodynamic tank and the automatic disinfection equipment, which is part of the requirement of the approval of that permit.
Okay. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you.
And that's not to exceed $79,350?
Yes, not to exceed based on our rates. Correct.
Any other questions for Neil? Do we have a motion to accept Neil's proposal for the construction engineering site transmission main not to exceed $79,350?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion by Colleen.
I'll second.
Second by Ralph. Roll call, Margo.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Randy Neumeyer?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Richard Church?
Yes. Motion carries six zero. Thanks again, Neil.
Thank you.
Number six, utility service master services agreement. Neil or Chris?
Or Chris? I'll take this one. The next, actually, these next two are fairly one in the same. This is the master service agreement for the current water tower on the north side to be repainted and maintenance, which is part of our, I believe, S R F agreement or one of our east side, one of our water agreements with the alphabet commissions out there in Indianapolis. Yeah. It's just easier to call them that. It actually has come down in cost from when we were last quoted by about $13,000 annually. This will put a new logo, new paint, and I believe a mixer within the water tower, which keeps the water moving. And there were several questions by Sue Hayes, our utility billing specialist. We have received those questions back from Suez, who has the contract here in front of you. I believe also last executive session you were shown the pricing matrix and what that would look like year over year. If it is approved tonight, I would just make that contingent upon attorney review and the question, the answered questions from Sue and Suez being memorialized within the contract. Or we wait a month and come back.
I would make, I would make a motion to approve the master services agreement contingent upon legal review as well as with the inclusion of the commentary provided by our utility billing specialist Sue Hayes in conjunction with the comments of our town manager.
Motion by Randy.
I'll second.
Can you repeat my motion?
Second by Julie. Roll call, Margo.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Randy Neumeyer?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Richard Church?
Yes. Motion carries six zero. Thank you. Number seven, do we, same thing or?
Something that needs to be done and same contingencies as the previous one.
Is it $44,014 annually? Is that what we're looking at with a reduction in the ninth year?
Correct. Over, after the ninth year, it drops down to $20,000 or so.
Okay. Do I make a motion for the utility service company Inc. Parish Avenue?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the utility service company Inc. Parish Avenue Water Take Maintenance Agreement pending legal review, including the comments of our utility billing specialist Sue Hayes as well as at the recommendation of our town manager.
I'll second that based on what he said.
Okay. Thank you, Colleen. Roll call, Margo.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Randy Neumeyer?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Richard Church?
Yes. Motion carries six zero. Moving to number eight, Lakeview Business Park Water Recapture Agreement.
David?
That's me. We are nearly there. Conceptual agreement has been reached. We're working on a formula for the collection of reimbursement fees for industrial and residential connectors. I do expect to have this done next time.
We did have a thing in our package prior to getting the current ones, so that's not ready.
That document is stale by three months, Bob. So I'm not certain I know why it's in the packet, but I saw four drafts in the last two days. That's how we're working this thing down. And there's a lot of money involved and there's a template component to it.
That's important thing, I think, the template for going forward.
And the money.
And the money is important also.
About $355,000.
That's important.
Involved, so.
Okay, thank you. So we, do we have a motion to defer this until next meeting?
I'll make the motion to defer until next meeting.
Thank you, Colleen.
I'll second.
Second by Ralph. Roll call, Margo.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Randy Neumeyer?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Richard Church?
Yes. Motion carries six zero. Will we do the written report, by report for our clerk treasurer or deputy clerk treasurer?
Well, Jen told me that she sent me cash and extended her reports to all of you last Friday.
Okay. She did and I received it, so thank you. Consultant staff reports, engineer, it's for staff, please.
Yes, sir. Westside Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Project One, we have shop drawings received and reviewed and approved what we've had submitted to us thus far. We're coordinating with the Lake County Highway Department on their access and have confirmed that the insurance has covered their needs. Project Two of the Westside Sanitary Sewer Interceptor designs proceeding. We anticipate submitting I D M permits in the next 60 to 90 days. East Side Interceptor, that lining is proceeding. It's handled by staff and they're doing a fine job. The S S E S, we've got data from the sewer department and we've requested additional data being collected during the wet weather flows, which are anticipated during the next 60 to 90 days. Any questions?
Thank you, Neil. Any questions for Neil?
Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Operations, Mr. Kubiak?
We're working on getting some well pump upgrades for the west side for the pump, the water tower in Havenwood. We got the testing bolt loads, all that testing done in the last couple of years. So we're going to be able to upgrade up size two of the well pumps to increase production by like 25 to 40 horsepower pumps, which will be quite a lot of water increase. We're looking into upgrading the electric bolt system to 480 at the pump house in, at the water tower. So all four of our production facilities will be 480 in the pumps and the drives and all the equipment will be interchangeable with everything. So it'll make it a lot easier to keep stuff in stock when stuff goes bad and everything's compatible. So we're looking into that or we would have had a recommendation for the well pump upgrade, but we're making sure we get everything what we need before we do it. Also, we're getting some prices on the new generator for the Robin's Nest Water Facility. That generator is at the end of its life and it's become undependable. So we're getting some quotes on that. Also, we're working on doing some upgrades to Sewer List Station Eight, which is out there by Cortes on 41 to the north. We're getting some, some pricing to do some repairs to that and get it up to today's standards. We should have that stuff coming down the pipe ready for next month.
Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
I've noticed, I'm a customer of the Utopia Water System. There's an extremely strong chlorine smell in the water lately when I turn my tap on and also some discoloration. It's a little bit brown.
Yeah, I know they did some, they did some heights, some water tests for the shilling warehouse last weekend and did some pretty, quite high flows. That could have been something to do with discoloration, but the chlorine smell.
The chlorine smell, as soon as I turn the tap on, I can smell it right away like I'm in a swimming pool.
Yeah, they monitor that daily, so I will have to check with Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Thanks, Tim. Town Attorney?
Petition settlement on the town's system development charter rate petition to the I U R C is set for April 6th. Filings are being made in support of the settlement negotiated. It appears that we have agreement with the O U C C for that, but the final word is the commission and that hearing presentation will be on April 6th in Indianapolis. I'm not certain what will happen with that, alphabet, if you will.
Thank you, David. J M O B?
Chris? We've had no updates.
Okay. We do have, do we get, did we get that meeting scheduled for when is it?
They've not proposed a date yet.
Okay, all right, all right, very good. Thank you. Public comment? Any public comment? Public comment? Anybody on line, Margo?
No.
Seeing no public comment, this meeting is adjourned. Next meeting Tuesday, April 19th.
Thank you.
Roll call?
Robert Carnahan?
Here.
John Forman, Dylan?
Present.
Alan Sheehan?
Here.
Richard Church?
Here.
Randy Neumeyer?
Present.
Jennifer Sandberg?
Present.
I'm Otto Nekki.
Present. Jill is a person who's really kind of embodies the, Jill is a person who's really kind of embodies the American dream as it relates to a blue collar person making it. She started working for Burger King as a manager and was self-taught as she came through the process of learning how to be a public servant and excelling to the highest levels of leadership. So it's an honor for me to be able to present this plaque to her because I understand how hard she's worked and how much she cared about this community. So thank you very much for your service and we wish you well in your next endeavors and I'm sure you'll have a lot of success.
Thank you.
Yeah, turn around, Jill, pay watch.
Now you got a chance to kick him.
Thank you, Jill.
Any words, Jill?
Well, I was a resident of Cedar Lake before moving to Lowell.
On Lee Street?
Yes, at one point on Lee Street on Lake Shore Drive. When we originally moved here, that house is now a new home. People moving to Cedar Lake become lifelong residents. So watching the town grow, starting here in the clerk's offices, as Randy has said, and working through various roles, watching all of the community crossing grants and various grants the town has gotten from E 85 school to various things like that. I think some of my roles in nonprofits, which is working with Ralph and the Boys and Girls Clubs and Meals on Wheels, bringing that mentality, plus the same as a mom who, if you can use a coupon on it, I will, mentality to paying the bills and making sure we get the best deal from switching cell phone services to various office supplies and getting the most for every taxpayer dollar that we can. So that's one of the things I know I brought to this community. May have driven a couple of people nuts. Tim's the same way, who's sent a coupon, so always M and R's. But watching this community grow and the dedication of staff throughout the organization is just amazing.
Well, thank you again and best wishes to you and your family. Please stay in touch with us. Or you're always welcome back here anytime.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a public hearing, Resolution Number 1305, review of legals.
In order.
Reading of Resolution 1305, Mr. Sharpby's title.
Resolution Number 1305, a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Cedar Lake, Lake County, Indiana, adopting an American Rescue Plan Act plan, appropriating monies from the Town of Cedar Lake Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund in all matters related to.
Thank you. Are there any remonstrators for or against Resolution 1305? Name and address for record.
Ray Jones, Dixon, 811 West, 132nd Place. I just have a question.
Ms. Matt.
Providing a premium pay for employees, is that was just one time during the COVID or is that salary that was set and then we have to continue to pay that for those positions?
We, we never adopted a premium play for, a pay for employees. That was one of the allowable uses, but the town is investing it into infrastructure that is allowable.
Oh, so that list that was on the?
The list was the allowable uses.
Oh, okay. So then what are, I guess the question is, then what are you using the money for? So you're just using it for infrastructure?
We're using it for water utility, infrastructure, namely the Utopia Water Main project.
Okay. Because it was kind of confusing because it listed all those things. So that's why I thought you were using the money.
Legally, we had to list all those things.
Okay. I appreciate clarification.
Yep, no problem. Any other remonstrators for or against? Okay, there being none, remonstration is closed. We have the Town Council's discussion on Resolution 1305. Is there any discussion?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Town Council decision on Resolution 1305. Is there a motion to approve or deny?
Make a motion to approve Resolution 1305.
Thank you. Motion by Ms. Rivera, there's a second. Second by Ms. Sheehan. Questions or discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan?
Yes.
Richard Church?
Yes.
Randy Neumeyer?
Yes, motion carries six to zero. Now we have public comment on agenda items. I know a lot of you are probably here to talk about softball fields in the neighborhood there. That will be the public comment at the end of the meeting. So if anybody's here for that reason or any other reason of open public comment, that's at the end of the meeting. So this is public comment on agenda items. Mary Joan?
My address again or this?
No, we're good.
Okay.
You've made the record.
Right. Under new business number one, I know I have talked to a council member concerning this and since handled essential waiver requests. So my, I inquired, what does that mean? mean? I didn't understand what it meant. Um, and so it's, I, by inquiring, it's about a billing permit of twelve months. I understand that now, you know, you're going to look at that, cause I really in my head can't fathom that anything can be built in twelve months, especially with the growing community. If we're going to have, you know, industrial buildings and we're going to have commercial buildings and, you know, what if a hospital came? It's not going to be built in twelve months. So I hope you review that and kind of make a change to that for some of these big buildings I think you're going to have in the future, especially schools. I, I can't imagine a school being done in twelve months. So I appreciate that. And I also think you have to take into consideration too what COVID's done to some of our construction and also supplies, being able to obtain those supplies. So I hope that you'll be understanding when people need a request to continue to build for Cedar Lake.
I think you're reading my mind up here, Mary Joan. I was going to make those same comments.
Okay, that's real scary, but there is.
I don't recommend that to anyone. Any other public comment on agenda items? Thank you. We have the minutes of the March first, twenty twenty-two meeting, claims, all town funds, two hundred twenty-six thousand four hundred twelve dollars ninety-five cents, wastewater operating, one hundred sixty-nine thousand three hundred twenty-seven dollars sixty-five cents, water utility of eighty thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars thirty-four cents, stormwater of three thousand five hundred nine dollars seventy-eight cents, and payroll, three, three, twenty twenty-two of one hundred seventy-two thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars seventy-five cents, and February remittances of one hundred seventy-two thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars seventy-five cents. Manual journal entries for February one through twenty-eight of twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion to accept and waive the reading of the minutes and accept the consent agendas listed?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Sharp, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Miller, questions or discussion? Roll call.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julia Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan?
Yes.
Richard Sharp?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries six, zero. Ordinances and resolutions, resolution thirteen oh six, a resolution of the town council, town of Cedar Lake, Lake County, Indiana, approving a loan from the town sewage works in all matters related there too. Is that the title as well?
That's exactly the title.
Thank you. I read the title then.
Thank you, Randy.
Sorry, I took your job.
Thank you, Randy.
You've heard a reading of resolution thirteen oh six. Um, Ms. Maggie, any explanations?
I can take that one.
Thank you.
Who's this?
So this was, um, I believe created to us by Barnes and Thornburg, Phil Pasenda. This is a backstop, the American Rescue Plan money that we will be receiving comes in two distributions. The town received its first distribution late last year. The town will be receiving its second distribution in August. Um, and we want to get started on the Utopia, Utopia project specifically, um, sooner than later. So this is a backstop insurance policy basically that allows us to contract out the, the project because we'll have the money, um, as a loan, temporary loan from the sewer utility to the water utility. Uh, and that will be, if it has to be exercised, will be reimbursed when we receive the second distribution of the American Rescue Plan money, um, in totality.
Thank you.
Mr. President? Sue Hayes called me a little before the meeting and she had heard on lists or some of the smaller municipalities had received a portion of the rescue fund that towns had turned down. So she had me check the bank and there is a pending, uh, deposit of sixty-six thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars and forty-
The money down?
Yes. And they thought it was- Yeah, it was too much of a hassle for them to go through setting up everything.
Wow, some communities in the beginning of the, uh, American Rescue Plan distribution thought that the reporting requirements for the, the money that was going to be received were going to be too onerous, uh, and the allowable uses were too slim, uh, at the time the guidance was provided when it was, uh, first created, uh, that they turned the money down. Uh, that money is now being redistributed amongst those that did accept the money. And since that time, the allowable uses and reporting requirement guidance, I believe loosened up. Um, so we're receiving the benefit of, and turning it down.
Wow, okay. Thank you.
And that's in sixty-six thousand dollars?
Yes, sir. Sixty-six thousand four hundred twenty-one dollars and forty-seven cents.
All right.
Mr. President, council will need to do some procedures related to that sixty-six thousand. Um, and there was no adjustment made for tonight because we're set and we don't want to upset the, uh, process we're in for the contracting and, and the like.
Yeah, as I reviewed six oh three, um, about disbursements of these funds, while certain things have been simplified, there's still quite a bit of a burden of responsibility as it relates to policy initiatives that have to back up everything that was.
The federal government, however, uh, gave some relief to details and exactness by, you know, imposing or instituting a ten million dollar-
A ten million dollar cap, huh?
Cap or, or example, number. So.
Lost revenue reporting rather than a project specific reporting.
It is. It actually reduces accountability also, but it's beneficial to communities like ours when we're doing things like this.
Thank you. Is there a motion by the council to approve resolution thirteen oh six?
I make a motion to approve our resolution number thirteen oh six.
Motion by Mr. Sharp, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Sheehan, questions or discussion? Roll call.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julia Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan? Richard Sharp?
Yes.
Randy Neiman?
Yes, motion carries six, zero. B Z A and Plan, uh, performance surety for People's Bank project in the amount of fourteen thousand. This performance surety should be made contingent upon plan commission approval due to the timing of receipt and uniqueness of saying. Is there a motion by the council to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve. I'll make the motion to approve the performance surety for People's Bank project in the amount of fourteen thousand.
With the contingents?
With the contingency.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Ms. Sheehan, is there a second? Second by Ms. Rivera, questions or discussion? Roll call.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julia Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan?
Yes.
Richard Sharp?
Yes.
Randy Neiman?
Yes, motion carries six, zero. Item two is letter of credit for Cedar Lake Storage in the amount of eighteen thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars. Uh, Mr. Salatas?
Uh, this is a letter of credit for Cedar Lake Storage for their public improvements that are not yet completed.
And that's the paving of the parking lots, I corrected.
No, this is, this is sidewalks.
Sidewalks, okay.
And infrastructure. Their final plot was approved October twentieth at the plant commission meeting.
Thank you. Sir, motion by the council to approve the letter of credit for Cedar Lake Storage for eighteen thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sharp, questions or discussion? Roll call.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julia Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan?
Yes.
Richard Sharp?
Yes.
Randy Neiman?
Yes, motion carries six, zero. New business, uh, item one is the Hanover Central waiver request. Mr. Salatas?
Um, as mentioned in public comment, um, this is a waiver, waiver request from Hanover School, uh, because their permit is about to expire before the construction is finalized, I believe only by a matter of a few weeks. Uh, so the request is to waive a little over twelve thousand dollars for what would be the renewal of the permit. Um, I believe as Randy, you've mentioned, and you should have seen, uh, an email today of potential amendments to the building fees and regulations that would potentially, if adopted, extend the building permit out, um, for larger projects because multi-million dollar projects cannot be completed in a year, um, which would basically make this request go away in the future.
Yeah, and it's in front of us now. Add to the comments of Mr. Salatas and, and, uh, Mrs. Dixon, um, I, you know, Cedar Lake is, has been a largely bedroom community as its development has grown and we have run into some things here as, as Mary Joan pointed out with, uh, pandemics, supply chain interruptions, uh, lack of access to certain, uh, goods, scope of project, I mean, it's massive undertaking that they're, uh, and, and really it's a public need project. So, I mean, I, I think we need to develop some kind of a policy that still keeps some accountabilities relates to, uh, time and expiration of these things because not everything needs eighteen months or twenty-four months. But I think we've got to figure out how to do something that makes sense, especially as the town starts to see more commercial development. Uh, Mary Joan's a hundred percent correct that, uh, we're going to need to consider some policy initiatives that make this more feasible going forward. I mean, it would be my recommendation to the council to approve this based on those facts, not to make this a blanket policy yet, but to work on developing one based on size, scope, need, um, all those sorts of things. So, Dave?
The, uh, plant commission has just finished and you adopted the replacement zoning ordinance for the town. Right behind that review will be the subdivision control ordinance.
Yeah.
And easily within the body of that instrument, legislation, you can create, uh, different categories of responsibility or completion or, uh, concrete standards of development. So, that's on the horizon very quickly.
Thank you. Tim?
Is there any way that you guys could consider they all, four of the school projects? Because next month, uh, I mean, real soon, I mean, the addition, the concession stand, the, there was like five separate projects that are all going to be, the other ones are right on the heels of this one. I'm not exactly sure what this one is.
Can, can we do something here where, okay, if the council's going to make a motion, I have no problem with that, but we need to catch the paper up to it. So we need to get something from the school.
I believe there's five separate permits. There's the bus barn, the administrative center, the middle school. This is just the middle school addition, I believe, but, um, like there, all those things out there are going to run into the same problem. So, I mean, it seems to me it's not putting everybody through this again.
Can we get the paper caught up to that then for our next meeting? So if the council does take action, that we have something to clean up our record on?
Do you want a letter for all the rest of the permit?
Yeah, anything that, anything that you think may expire, let's just get that cleaned up right now. So you guys can continue doing what you're doing without thinking about that part of it?
Yeah, makes sense.
Okay. But we just want to clean up the record and have the paper to follow it.
Okay, cause we just, we just responded to the bill that we received.
That's automatic from the building system as they come to the eleventh month range to get sent out. I mean, that's kind of-
So we'll be proactive on this, these next ones and, uh, clean it up.
Maybe there won't be a bill.
Okay. Uh, we have a recommendation, uh, from our director of operations, Mr. Kubiak, to not only consider the waiver request of the current one in front of us, which is building permit number twenty-one dash one twelve, but also the totality of building permits that are nearing expiration. So is there a motion by the council to approve that?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Carnahan, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Rivera, is your option?
Do you want to, uh, include on your next public meeting agenda and the consent agenda portion, ratification of action? Cause the paper will have caught up to the action for documentation purposes.
Yes, sir. Uh, we have concurrence. Thank you. You may just say, concur? Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julia Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan?
Yes.
Richard Sharp?
Yes.
Randy Neiman?
Yes, motion carries six, zero. Uh, thank you. Item two is humane pet store ordinance. We had listed here Dustin Sibidoo, he is not with us tonight. Is there a motion to defer?
I guess. I'd like to defer this until we have, um, Mr. Sibidoo here. He might, um, also be the director of the main society, so that will be helpful.
I'll second, yeah.
Thank you. Motion to defer by Ms. Rivera, seconded by Mr. Carnahan. Questions or discussion? Roll call.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julia Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan?
Yes.
Richard Sharp?
Yes.
Randy Neiman?
Yes, motion carries six, zero. Uh, item three is approval of professional services agreement with C B B E L in an amount not to exceed two hundred thirty-eight thousand for construction of, observation of the community crossroads management grant road construction projects. Uh, Mr. Salatas?
This is a contract for, um, or, or an agreement for construction observation for your C C M G roads for this year. Um, I did check with Sue Hayes. This is, uh, planned for and actually under budget for this particular one. Um, it's a council decision to establish.
Thank you. Sir, motion by the council to approve the proposal by Christopher Burke Engineering not to exceed two hundred thirty-eight thousand.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Sharp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Carnahan, questions or discussion?
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julia Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Alan Sheehan?
Yes.
Richard Sharp?
Yes.
Randy Neiman?
Yes, motion carries six, zero. Item four is approval of professional services agreement with Christopher Burke Engineering in an amount not to exceed eighty-four thousand for construct, construction observation of the sediment de-watering facility for the lake decor restoration project. Same thing, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sheehan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sharp, questions or discussion? Are we still on task, on time?
On task, on time and on budget.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions or discussions? Roll call.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julia Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan?
Yes.
Richard Sharp?
Yes.
Randy Neiman?
Yes, motion carries six, zero. Item five is award in dots railroad striping grant work through traffic management company incorporated in the amount of eight thousand nine hundred and twenty. Mr. Salatas, anything to add?
Uh, there's just a map provided, uh, in your packet that shows the location, um, and traffic management company is the lowest responsible bidder.
Thank you. A motion by the council to approve the proposal for traffic management company of eight thousand eight hundred and twenty thousand.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Sharp, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Miller, questions or discussion? Roll call.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julia Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan?
Yes.
Richard Sharp?
Yes.
Randy Neiman?
Yes, motion carries six, zero. Uh, item six, acceptance of two temporary easements for road paving and Highland subdivision for the property located at seven two two six west one hundred twenty-seventh place. Uh, parcel A temporary easement, parcel B temporary easement. Mr. Salatas?
Jill, Don, Alafont and myself met with the property owners that went over this for a road paving project at the state's and the, uh, property owners after reviewing the projects signed the temporary, and again, temporary easement.
And, and this is all part of that C C M G group of projects?
Correct. Thank you.
Actually, it's the Highland project in the, in the community across there.
Oh, okay.
It's a locally funded project.
Yeah. Sir, motion by the council to approve the two temporary easements as listed.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Carnahan, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr., uh, Miller, questions or discussion? Roll call.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julia Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Colin Sheehan?
Yes.
Richard Sharp?
Yes.
Randy Neiman?
Yes, motion carries six, zero. Item seven, we have municipal complex recommendation for the preferred design team, Mr. Salatas, and we also have Mr. Jensen Levaridis group with us this evening.
You have a, um, a letter in your packet that goes over, uh, who was interviewed, who all, um, put in, um, bids or proposals for the projects, um, and who was on the selection committee. Uh, after all was said and done, um, we would like to go with K two N and not to exceed forty thousand dollars. Um, their presentation and proposal, um, really hit it out of the park. Um, I believe Chief, you were part of that, and I think they were going to do or design a really great project for us, um, as they have a vast amount of experience doing so.
Mr. Jensen? Can you please, just for the public that's here, explain the role that Levaridis plays in this project as we go forward and answer any questions by the council?
Yes, Mr. President. Thank you, council, for having us here tonight. Uh, we serve at the pleasure of the council, uh, with your staff, as your owner's representative in projects just like this. So members of my team and Mr. Salatas and members of the police and fire obviously went through this process as part of this initial step. Uh, we met about a month ago to talk about how you want to deliver this project and that's still being discussed amongst legal counsel and in the council. However, we determined in that meeting that we didn't know enough, um, about the project itself in order to actually proceed with something. So the, the recommendation by our team, which was then accepted, and now you guys are, um, likely going to, or you're going to take action tonight on this, this opinion and this recommendation, is to move forward with the design contract to at least explore how big this building needs to be, then the function of it. So we can kind of start getting pricing around this instead of just taking a shot in the dark to understand what it may or not be. So this is, we suggested a low fee for an architecture firm to kind of get in and do the programming phase, understand the magnitude of the project first. So that's what, tonight the letter, as the letter states, we're just- we're just asking for permission for your legal counsel and your town manager to engage into contract discussions. The contract would come back before you for final approval later.
It's exciting. Kind of a real first step here. Thank you, Mr. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Jensen? Thanks, Dan.
Thanks, Dan.
Sir, motion by the council to approve the municipal complex recommendation for the preferred design team of K2N.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Sharp, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Miller. Questions or discussion? Roll call.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Colin Sheebin?
Yes.
Richard Sharp?
Yes.
Randy Neiman.
Yes, motion carries six zero. Item eight is to ratify confirmation of private placement of debt issuance for Lake ecosystem restoration project. Mr. Austin?
The volatility of the world came into play last week, and what you have before you is a slight shift in the process used or recommended to be used for funding and financing the tip portion of the lake ecosystem restoration project. So rather than having our underwriters go to market and solicit bids, it's a bid or solicitation process they would make to underwriters and money people, they determined that in order to lock in rates and hold them in place, notwithstanding the volatility that we're experiencing right now in the economy, that private placement delivery of an interest rate for debt service would be pursued. On Friday, we learned, on Thursday, I'm sorry, Thursday afternoon last week, we learned that pro formas had been run at 1.78%, that those pro formas were about a month old, little bit more, maybe five weeks. The change in the market was to over 2.3%, 2.35%, and that number had to be reviewed, and it was exhaustively last week, Friday. And ultimately, our financial advisors came back to us for the private placement opportunity at 2.15%. And these times, those are excellent results, and our recommendation is that you ratify the direction to proceed with the private placement versus suffer the unknown consequences of being in the market and taking whatever comes, or not doing the project at the present time. And I don't think that's an option. We're not on task and on time.
It's only been 25 years in the making.
That's what happened. It happened late last week, and that's why it's last on your agenda as agenda items or compiled. So we recommend, and I think Chris and the team are on board, too, Ace, Phil Fasenda, the whole team was involved in this discussion.
Thank you. Sir, motion by the council to ratify the confirmation of private placement of debt issuance for Lake ecosystem restoration project?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Sharp, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Sheebin. Questions or discussion? Roll call.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Colin Sheebin?
Yes.
Richard Sharp?
Yes.
Randy Neiman.
Yes, motion carries six zero. Town Council reports. Mr. Carnahan?
Storm board did not meet due to a lack of quarters.
Appointed a new member and he didn't come either? I don't believe he was sworn in yet, and then there was a member that was absent. Got it. Okay. Any other council reports? Town Attorney?
This is an appendant or an addendum to the report about the private placement. Randy, if you would consider soliciting a motion to amend the agenda to have the council consider ratification of the term sheet that reflects everything I told you about occurring in interest rate and then in terms of.
What did you call it?
This is a term sheet.
Term sheet, okay.
For the financing, which contains all the salient terms, the conditions, requirements, responsibilities, and deliverables.
Sir, motion by the council to amend the agenda to allow for consideration of this item?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Miller, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Sheebin. Questions or discussion? Roll call.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Colin Sheebin?
Yes.
Richard Sharp?
Yes.
And Randy Neiman.
Yes, motion carries six zero. So the agenda item is to?
Ratify and approve the term sheet and authorize signature by the redevelopment authority.
Thank you. Is there a motion by the council to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Miller, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Sharp. Questions or discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Austin?
This confirms also the report I made earlier to you that closing will be honored before April 11.
Thank you.
The term, salient term of the term sheet.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call.
Robert Carnahan?
Yes.
Julie Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Colin Sheebin?
Yes.
Richard Sharp?
Yes.
Randy Neiman.
Yes, motion carries six zero. Court Treasurer, Ms. Nagy?
She left me no information, so I have nothing. Thank you.
You can just, you got the floor, you can say whatever you want. Everybody got nervous over there. Item four, town manager?
You'll have, you'll see in your packet, there's a memo regarding the baseball fields that we, I was requested to investigate along with our town engineer, Don Alafont. We did that investigation. There were some short-term and long-term solutions that we noticed that are in this memo. The long-term ones are clearly unattainable and does not solve the problem immediately, but would solve the problem, obviously, in the long term, requesting the tournament to use the sports complex, which is years away, or dedicating additional parking spaces. Short-term, potential partnership with enterprises that may have better suit their, their needs, such as maybe a large church or the schools, potentially asking the baseball or softball fields to create additional parking spaces on their own property as the town's park property is out of space. And then restrict parking on the public roads, either permanently, weekends only, or through temporary police order.
I have a question, maybe you can answer, or maybe WBG could answer. If they do restrict the parking on the weekends, like no parking by police order, could this be residential parking only by police order?
That would be very difficult to do.
They just wouldn't know.
I reckon, I mean, we've been dealing with this for years, and that sort of response, and it hasn't really worked. So if we're going with that solution, I would recommend something permanent instead of placing the ordinance first.
They think it would create another burden to the residents if they can't park in front of their houses and their guests can't park in front of their houses. And I know it'd be hard to figure out who's who, but.
You can make a statement that it's residential parking only. I've seen that before.
Yeah, that's what I was, that's what I was getting at, and.
How do you differentiate? Like if somebody's having a birthday party, that's the difficult thing.
And it's just, just as difficult to put up, you know, to have a police car out there and, you know.
It's not a perfect resolution as well.
It's not perfect, but if the resident says like, hey, this car's not at my party, they're at the ball field, they can call the police because if it's residential only, I don't know, I just wouldn't want to create another issue by not allowing them to park in front of their own houses as their guests.
There is already no parking on one side of, I think, both the streets in question. Pretty informational. It is a very difficult situation, Don and myself, and I believe the two chiefs and I went out as well on two different occasions, and it's simply an area that's gained popularity that was not appropriately sized and positioned for what it has become.
Since we're on the subject matter, I know we have some people here that want to speak on this. I would turn to the Vice President of Cedar Lake Softball first. Mr. Stanger, is there any comments or ideas you'd like to offer?
Well, I have a list. I'd like to come up and talk, but be ready.
Since we're here on this part, it's pertinent to where we're at in the meeting.
Sure. Mark Stanger, Cedar Lake, 13925 Wicker. I am the Vice President of Cedar Lake Softball. I'll clarify that.
I said that.
Okay, thank you. It's been difficult when people understand that we are not their enemy. Joan Torrance, Shirley Moody, Mary Naffick, Charlotte Tussie, all these people were instrumental in starting this program. I want to give everybody a little bit of history about what goes on at this park and how it's ran. The town doesn't really do nothing for us at this point. I'm not trying to bash the town. We've been in meetings with Randy and the gentleman over there for a new sports complex. Little League softball has voiced concerns about what they need. I can't control what goes on in the streets. I'm coaching travel ball myself. We're there for the kids. We're there to keep girls out of trouble. Little League's doing the same thing. Little League's doing the same thing we're doing. It is not an easy solution. I travel to many parks, many towns, Illinois, Chicago, Crown Point, Sherrville. They say the same problems all over. Everybody, Griffin, you go to Griffin to their park. You're parking in the street in front of somebody's house. Part of life. I'm not happy with the town the way it grows. I mean, it's life. It's something that I have to live with. It's something that I have to deal with. The better the two evils for me is I got to keep moving forward and keep working with these kids. That is what our park is about. We're about life lessons. We're about teaching the kids how to win gracefully, lose gracefully, how to clean up the park. I live at that park. I spend lots and lots of hours there trying to keep it up. The only way this park runs right now is on tournaments. We have a current registration, I believe, of 70, roughly 70 kids. That's not enough to sustain the park. Our teams do play in a, prior to preferably, we do play in these tournaments. We also play in other tournaments in other towns, as everybody does. It brings in revenue for the restaurants. It brings in a lot of outside people for all the businesses. It is probably, I don't want to say this, we have had tournaments since the 90s there. We've had travel ball tournaments since the 90s. We have All-Star tournaments, Mary Connor Classics, one of the other ladies that used to fund softball. What will I tell you has changed? Maybe the amount of kids in the programs. Our numbers for rec league has not increased tremendously yet. We see it coming because of the growth in Cedar Lake, a lot of young. And as we discussed in this meetings that we had with the sports complex, we know that's not going to happen right away. There's not an easy answer. I do know that I'm there getting fields ready for tournaments, usually tournaments run Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I'm there on Thursday morning, Thursday nights, or Friday mornings, depending on weather, to make sure we can get fields lined the day before. If the weather's not going to rain, the fields are lined. Saturday nights, we wait for tournament games to get done. Soon as I can, I'm on a field's dragon. I do not keep lights on purposely. We try to shut them down. I know there's a neighborhood there. I understand. Any other questions proposed? I mean, people move to an area where there's softball fields. People move to an area where there's racetracks. People move to an area where there's dairy farms. You complain about odor, you complain about traffic, you complain about noise. I don't get it. You move there, do some research. We try to provide a tournament schedule for the police department. I think we did send one last year. I'm not sure if Billy got it or not. But what we can do is make sure that they get a schedule for the tournaments coming up. We can print a schedule up and hand it out to the neighborhood so that maybe they can saw horses up, pylons, whatever. I mean, I have a secretary down the street at the end there across from Mrs. Basham. He put up some posts that is, they don't park there. There is parking problems, especially with Little League has their tournaments going on. It's hard. I'm not giving up doing this for the kids. We're keeping kids out of trouble. We're keeping kids, I'm there every day checking on their parking. If there's any destruction going on, I'm always seeing kids on the field, hey, what are you guys doing? We're playing ball. Okay, please respect the park. I'm always talking to these kids to respect our parks because we put a lot of hard work in there. I don't know what can be done, but I can tell you that every single town I go to, it's the same situation. We're parking in front of houses, we're parking in front of, I'm walking two, three blocks to get to a game. It goes on everywhere. There's not an easy answer. There really isn't. It's kind of like what's going on in the country today. It's the price we pay, the price we pay to keep our kids out of trouble. It's what I, it's what we did. It's what we're going to keep doing until somebody shuts us down, and God, hope that never happens. As long as I'm alive, I'm going to be at that park. We're going to keep working with kids. And I'm one of the older guys that are left. Thank God, we have a young group that has stepped up to help us right now. We've got a really good young group. Our treasurer, Mandy's here. She's done a wonderful job with our financing and our money because we were in trouble two years ago with the president. We're digging out of that hole. Kristy Grady's our current president. She's got a lot going on. She's got young kids. We just had another gentleman step up, Ken, who's going to be, he's on our board, and we're hoping he's going to be our next president. I do not want to be the president there. I'm just there to try to help keep the park running. We are not the neighbors' enemies. We are trying to do what we can. Trust me when I tell you, when I know those lights are on at night, I try to get them off as soon as I can. I'm there working on fields. It's only because we're trying to get them ready for the day before. I hate to be there at 5:00 in the morning trying to line fields. Other than that, if anybody has any questions, by all means, I'll field any questions, but I don't know what more. It's not an easy solution. It is not.
I'm actually hopeful with this new park board we have that the idea of the athletic complex is not a back burner item or a dream item.
I am not either.
It's a priority item because not only can it be a great place for the kids that you are a part of the play, but also can be a community.
Absolutely.
Center, right? It can be something for the whole community to enjoy.
I mean, that is one of the problems right now, and like I said, I'm not trying to bash the town, but the town has not done nothing for it. They can't. I get it. In the future, the meeting that we had was awesome. I loved what I heard. When is it going to come to fruition? I don't know.
I'm hoping later this year that this group gets their feet under them and starts that plan process of, okay, we need to start putting together the steps.
Right.
To make it happen. And him being here helps with that, too.
Sure.
Because he can help lead that charge.
Well, it's a very professional run meeting. I mean, he had a lot of great ideas. I liked what I heard, but again, it takes a lot of money. Takes a lot of money, and I get it.
It's just, it does, but it's a great project.
Oh, it is a great idea. I just hope it, you know, comes to fruition here sooner than when.
It will. You'll be out there dragging those fields too, Mark.
Maybe we can put turf in. I don't have to. But no, I mean, it's, we are not the neighbors' enemies. We have been there since the 90s. Cedar Lake and Joan put their houses up or collaborated to buy that property from Pop Hawkins, I believe. And all we've done is expand it. We just try to keep it. I tried to make sure that the park runs as efficient as it can. We try to get the best for the money. Everything we do is 100% donations or me borrowing or begging or whatever. That is how that park is ran.
I played Little League over there.
I know.
I remember that.
I mean, it's, I'm constantly begging for help. It's, it is what it is. I'm a pusher when it comes to that, and we're going to keep pushing to get the help there. I mean, it's what, Shirley started, and Joan started a good legacy, and I'm going to try to keep it going.
Thank you, Mark.
All right.
Appreciate it. Is there anyone else on this subject matter that would like to comment?
I agree with everything Coach Stanger said.
Can you just state your name and address for the record, please?
Megan Fusco, 1337 Bell Street.
Megan, thank you.
Hello. Albert Cupido, 10812 West 134th Place. Me and my wife have lived on 134th Place for about four and a half years. Contrary to popular belief, we were well aware that there were ball fields at the end of the block when we decided to purchase the house. As someone that has grown up at fields, or in fields, we know that traffic, big events, roadside parking, those are things that just come along with parks. We don't have any children yet. We don't have any children that play at these ball fields. We do, however, know that outlets like these sports, such as softball, are paramount to the development of our youth and our society as a whole. It's odd that the rally cry in this town the last few years has been, what about the kids? When that rhetoric was used to push a big spending bill to expand our school system. And now there's a discussion that a pre-existing park is all of a sudden a hindrance to our community. As someone that has come to Cedar Lake to live here from an outside town, I don't believe it's right to, you know, chase out businesses, people. don't believe it's right to, um, you know, chase out businesses, people, or a way of life that came here before, you know, long before I ever came here. Um, and I would just like to end on this note. For the people that don't like the ball fields, what would you rather like to see there? You know, possibly some town home stock stacked on top of each other or maybe, you know, a few fast food joints? I would, you know, personally, if you're on the street, I would love to see those ball fields run.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Mandy Schultz. I am 10221 West 128th Avenue. I am the treasurer for Cedar Lake Softball. Um, I just wrote a little something down. Uh, thank you for letting me see tonight. It is my understanding that there are some neighbors surrounding softball fields that are unhappy with the traffic flow and parking during softball tournaments. As a treasurer, I see how much money it takes to run this organization. Tournaments bring in a large majority of the money that is required to keep our fields up and running. Without being able to host tournaments, we would not be able to keep our league going. The Cedar Lake softball fields are not just a place for girls to play, it's so much more. They're making lifelong friendships and learning how to work together as a team. As a mother and a coach, I can't tell you what softball has meant for me and my family. I've been coaching the same girls for five years. The skills they have learned and the bonds they have made will be something they'll always have. We strive to raise strong, independent women by giving them a skill they can call their own. Softball is life for my family and so many other families in this community. It is essential that we still be able to host tournaments to keep this league going for the young girls in this town. If there's something we could do to help with the traffic flow and parking during the tournaments, then we would love to be able to come to an agreement. We have offered to provide yard signs for private parking so the neighbors can put them in their lawns. We can also provide copies of our tournament schedule to the neighbors so they are aware of when tournaments will take place, as well as providing the police department with the same schedule so that they may patrol the area and make sure cars are not violating the rules set in place. I would also like to add that the police department has had our schedule for the last two years. Every time the law enforcement is out, it is the people who live in the neighborhood who are the ones parked illegally and blocking mailboxes. Last year, all of our tournaments were small and there wasn't anyone parked on the streets. We have had our people patrolling the streets and the golf carts to pick up garbage from the neighborhood. We are also emptying the cans at the fields more often to cut down on blowing trash. Our softball league is ran by a group of an amazing people who volunteer their time to keep this organization going. We are understanding people and very approachable. The bottom line is that we don't want anyone to feel as if we aren't considerate to their needs as a homeowner. We understand your concerns and we hope to come to an agreement that works for everyone.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask something?
Go ahead, Mark.
Um, I meant to ask, uh, I know, I heard that there was a rumor that the town was talking about putting a fence around that retention area by the Hannibal Park because they were complaining about the cars parking there tearing up that retention area. We open up our field floor, uh, the next street over, I got a cable there, I take it down so that they can park in the grass as long as it's not pouring rain. We let them park there, we try to easily beat the parking. We also, Rich Teo at this time owns that corner by my brother's house across the hallway lane. Rich lets us use that parking. The lot, the problem is a lot of people don't want to walk that far. Sometimes they'll run down there if it's some older people or something with a golf cart to pick them up. But the retention area is pretty much flat. There's never water in there. I would like to see the town not fence that off and let people continue to pull in the grass there. It's better to pull in the grass there than it is in front of people's houses, especially if it's dry. Is it going to get rutted up? Maybe sometimes. We have the same problem at the park, but we just have to take care of it, is what it is. Um, that would, by not fencing that off, if it's dry, there's, you know, three, four, or five cars that could park there. It's not wet, hardly ever holds water. It is wet, it's sometimes, but the amount of, because of the parking problem we have, I think it'd be beneficial if we didn't, if you guys didn't fence that off.
Thanks, Mark.
Yep.
Anybody else comment on this subject matter? Well, thanks to everyone for providing your input. Um, it's a difficult situation for everyone as well as people sitting up here, our law enforcement, our fire department, because the, the main job that we have is, one, to make sure that public safety is taken care of, so if there are impassable streets for fire trucks, that's a concern.
Sure.
Uh, the other thing is, is to make sure that private property owners, whether it's the softball league or the homeowners, all have access and use of their private property. So, it's a difficult balancing act and there's no, as you guys presented, there's no right one answer. We've had lots of residents here, um, presenting their concerns as well, so there's definitely opinions and strong feelings on either side of this and it's not an easy solution to come up with. The best solution is the one that we've, we started in the idea session last year was, is to build a new complex that has ample parking and ingress and egress and doesn't, uh, impede the use of private property in the neighborhood. And I would love to see softball and Little League still keep their fields as practice fields because, uh, I don't think you want to see green space disappear in the community. You want places for people to even play a little pickup game of baseball. We were lucky growing up in Brunswick that we built our own baseball field there and, uh, nobody kicked us off of there and we had a lot of fun. So, I think there's a balance that needs to be struck here somewhere from a policy standpoint, public safety, as well as reservation of pri, private property access. So, it's, it's going to be hard and, and I like the, what I heard tonight from Amanda with, you know, the idea of be proactive with the residents, be approachable, be open, um, and try to solve problems before they have to come to a police department because then things get bad for everyone.
And can I add too? I mean, we've had multiple girls get injured where we have to call, um, for any of the residents. They never have a problem getting down their street.
We try to make sure that it's open enough for them to get down there. There has been times too that the residents do have parties and they, some people will come to me and ask if they can use our parking lot all day long. Absolutely. If there's no tournaments going on, hell, the heck yeah. We don't have an issue trying to work with people. Like I said, we try, but they're not always going to be able to please everybody. Appreciate it.
Randy, do verify that. We, we have never had a problem getting back there. We even had a fire back there during a tournament, got a fire truck back there with no problem.
Good.
It's just, it's just, you just gotta drive slow.
If they're here, they can always get a hold of you.
Yeah.
Do something.
It's not, it's, it's like a, I have a unique perspective. I went to a lot of ballgames too. My son actually started playing girls softball. And I went over to Little League.
Didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah, he was too young to play.
He became a pretty decent baseball player.
Yeah, it was all right. But at the end of the day, you know, the hot, those fields are sick.
Well, I hope some members of our park board are watching this tonight and understand that this is a priority issue. This is one of these things that can create a massive community opportunity. So, hopefully people are motivated, as I am, to see this thing come to life. Director of Operations?
All right, just, uh, the equipment for the parts that we ordered last, at the fall of last year is in and it'll be installed within the next couple of weeks of the, those place huts and, uh, I've got that on my app, I've got a couple other little things. We're trying to get the electricity and the stuff at the Kiwanis Dog Park so that'll be up and ready to go here as soon as possible. So, I'll give some pricing on paving that parking lot and then give the electric and, and stuff and the water in there and get moving as soon as the weather breaks.
I have a question for you. I have spoke to some residents of Woods of Cedar Creek today that was, that were questioning any status update of the stormwater, uh, issues. I'm, I'm not aware if they're a planned project. I didn't know if something was in front of the stormwater board.
Well, originally, the plan was to go all the way to Rockland Street with the original plan. Uh, there was some people that did not wish to participate in the original plan, so the plan got shortened about 50% because of easement. People would, would not grant easements. Um, when Rick was here, we told the rest of the people that they need to have the easement signed and in place and we would consider trying to extend the rest of the way. I believe that was still the thing that was told to them and I don't think we still have that.
Originally, when I went to the stormwater board, it was a all or up to what portion we could get done project. In the field, we made a minor change to the project to make it a buildable project where we can build on doing one section into more sections. But at the time, we only had four residents who were participating and giving us an easement. We couldn't extend the project any further. There were too many sections where people didn't want to participate and provide easements. Um, at the same token, we reported that we were only going to do the smaller project and funds were expended then from the stormwater board, stormwater funds for all those projects. So, this would need to come back to the stormwater board now that we have, I believe, all of the easement documents for, for the project as was designed originally, as some of the property owners have changed. However, those funds that were there several years ago are no longer there. Um, this would be, need to be a project that is added to one of their capital project improvements.
Chris, can you maybe, uh, communicate with the stormwater board in revisiting this, um, this project to make sure this gets on their agenda?
I believe there was a gentleman at their last meeting who did bring this issue up.
Okay.
Um, Don Alafon is aware of it.
Let's just make sure it gets on the agenda so we start kind of reworking towards a solution.
It, it had been on the agenda for the meeting that had just been canceled.
Got it.
Plus.
Well, then I can report back to the residents to call. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Tim?
That's it.
Police Department, Mr. Brittingham?
In your package, you have our stats for a month. Um, we had 108 calls for agency assists, 219 for citizens, three for juveniles, 92 ordinance, 51 per persons, 20 for properties, 321 for traffic, one that wasn't classified. So, a total of 115 incidents, 72 state citations, 10 town ordinances, 21, um, town ordinances, that is 10 traffic ordinances. Warnings, 211 for state, four for town, 20 for ordinance, total of 235 for the month. And 28 arrests, 45 charges, 32 misdemeanors, 11 felonies. Total arrests were 59, total charges 96 for the month.
It's like business is good?
Business is good.
Anything else, Mr. Brittingham?
No, I, I really don't need to. I'd like to just add to the parking issue that I completely agree with what was stated, the letters that were written, 100%. Um, we're always there to do our job to enforce what rules are in place. Um, and, um, I don't, I don't know that making more rules is really the solution. Um, we're gonna just shift the battle from the neighbors being mad versus the ball people being mad. We're not going to solve the whole problem by.
The solution's only about an eight-figure number. How good are you ra, how good are you raising money, Mark?
I'm tired of doing it. I won't stop doing it, but I'm tired of doing it.
But I truly believe that there's very few people that do things they shouldn't do and we're there to deal with that.
We try to chase the kids off the yards as much as we can, but we can't control what the kids do with them.
Absolutely.
It's like Terry, for instance, Terry, the neighbor, I'm going to give you a quick example. He had kids sitting there on his trailer, parents were sitting there watching the game and he, he says, "Mark, can we do something about it?" I said, "Yeah." I asked him to leave. And they came back and they gave him some grief. And, uh, I said, "Jerry, with my permission, call the police, do what you got to do." If somebody wants to be that belligerent about it, we try to do what we can, but you can't control everybody. You know, and you're right, there is not an easy answer to this. It's kind of like what the guy I didn't vote for in office said, it's something, we're going to have to, uh, uh, pay the price. It is what it is. Every, everywhere I go, when you park for softball, I don't care what town it is, Northern Illinois, I'm parking in front of, I got a ticket a couple years ago, sitting in some, in front of somebody's face, is what it is.
Were you trying to get married at the time?
Yeah. No. No, but I mean, it's just, it's, it's states, if there's really not an easy answer. I agree. I appreciate the comments. It's, I, it's the lesser of two evils. It is what it is.
Let's keep working together.
That's all we can do. It's, thanks.
Uh, Fire Department?
Uh, you've got also our reports, um, just kind of a brief. We're close to 300 calls for the year ready, 134 for the month, restructured fires, uh, four water rescues, uh, a few other, uh, we have 11 overdoses or nine overdoses for the year. Um, couple, two death investigations, a lot of breathing calls, uh, gas leaks, one has mad, and, uh, 10 car crashes for the year so far. So, uh, we've been busy as well. Our tanker operation, uh, the township tanker, we are very close to getting it down the street. We've got a really good part of people trained that we need to get trained and we've been doing a lot of work with that truck. There's some additional equipment that we've ordered, a lot of stuff that is backordered. So, we should be using that truck here shortly.
Thank you, Teo. We have, uh, written communications, Building Department report. Where, where are we at so far? Jill?
You are at 15 new home permits as of the end of February with a value of just over $13 million. 52, um, alterations, repairs with a value of just under $2 million. The new report comes right out of your program, as I reported previously, higher in Florida, some wonders for the Building Department.
So, other written communications, Christopher Burke report, which is kind of an update on all these different projects. I also received communication from the Lake County Board of Elections and Registration. Dear Mr. Niemeyer, once again, as in previous elections, we need your assistance. We'd like to request you to Cedar Lake Town Hall to house our mechanics on Election Day, Tuesday, May 3rd, from 5:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Please verify the phone number, uh, 374-7000-NEXT-123. Our mechanics also need an entry code and name of officer on duty. Says please contact Jenny Gasperobik to confirm the information listed above. Um, I was actually at the Board of Elections right when they were going to send this letter. Uh, and this is something we do every year, so I had already signed a letter of theirs, so I will ask for the council to consider amendment of the agenda to allow for consideration or ratification of that signature. Is there a motion?
We make a motion to amend the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Sharp, any questions or discussion? Roll call.
Robert Kernian?
Yes.
Julia Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Colin Sheven?
Yes.
Richard Chart?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes, motion carries six zero. Uh, would anyone care to make a motion to ratify the signature, uh, that I provided to the Board of Elections for use of the Town Hall on May the 3rd?
I'll make a motion to ratify your signature for use for the Board of Elections on May 3rd.[1655.26]
Thank you. There's a motion?
I'll say it.
Second by Ms. Sheven. Yeah, I got cornered by those ladies there, Niemeyer let me go without a seat or so. Any other questions or discussions? Roll call.
Robert Kernian?
Yes.
Julia Rivera?
Yes.
Ralph Miller?
Yes.
Colin Sheven?
Yes.
Richard Chart?
Yes.
And Niemeyer?
Yes, motion carries six zero. Thanks. We go to open public comment.
I've had my hand up for a while if you can hear me.
Who's on, who's online?
Online.
This is Dave Novasell of 10805 West 134th Place.
Thank you, Dave. Go ahead.
I put my hand up there when the ball field got started talking.
I'm sorry, we didn't look at the screen, so...
Well, no problem, long as I got a chance to speak. You know, they come in here and they made themselves look really good, really good job. But, you know, it astonishes me, I came in here last week, and then all of a sudden, I told you guys my dealings with the ball field. First off, I emailed him a couple of times to no avail. Nobody gets back to me, nobody says anything. Then last year I go down there and I finally find somebody to talk to, and I just get screamed at about how it's not their problem, that it's the town's problem, deal with it. Now, all of a sudden, they're making a great show of, "Oh, we wanna work with the residents." Well, where was this when I was trying to communicate and work with yous? I'm not trying to start an argument, but the person I talked to was sitting in there, he knows, if he can remember me, but, you know, I'm trying to work with, and just like is being said here, but everything the ball field has said, they haven't worked with anybody. I've tried.
Dave, you failed to...
You wanna talk to him on my phone?
Okay. Now, go ahead and let Mr. Novasell finish, he's got the floor.
Now, now, I come in here in October and I ask for speed bumps to slow down the traffic because we ain't gonna get a cop car to sit out there and keep writing tickets. Supposedly, Mr. Kubiak and Mr. Fisher were supposed to work on that. I've never heard anything more about it. That was October's meeting. Then I come in here last meeting, talking, talking about the, the parking and all, and that's not everything. You know, there's still destruction, you know, they talk about the, or I talked about the fence back there. Nobody wants to take responsibility, but they go back in Hanover Park to warm up for these games, and, and they gotta throw north and south so that they use the houses or the fences for backdrop, instead of the other way, or go out to a field and practice. We're not trying to shut you guys down, by no means. So, what everybody is thinking about this shutdown thing, I don't know. I did ask for allowing you guys to have 200 people there when you can't house them. Now, we do have a school to, to take care of this parking problem. I do not agree with allowing you to park on the grass as you suggested. There's ordinance against it, and I don't think we should change that. We don't need to make a bigger parking lot, have people start parking at the school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Novasell. Public comment?
I just wanna rebut real quick.
Name and address.
Mark Stinger, Sierra Lake, 13925.
Thank you.
The day he's talking about, I just came from another tournament with my team at 12:30 in the afternoon, just to get to our park so I could work. My team was done at Crown Point. I could walk it up on, a gentleman with his back to me screaming at two of our girls in the concession stand. So, at that point, I turned and said, "How can I help you?" I'm the Vice President, Dave. I knew who it was. When you, when you come off screaming and yelling at ladies in the concession stand, it's just not a good thing, it's not how you're gonna get anything done, especially in the middle of the tournament with people all around. So, you just have to take a different approach, that's all. And as far as addressing parking at the school, I don't know how you would even do that, because the people, or how you gonna get them from the school to the softball complex? It's gonna be very difficult. We don't have a bus, we wouldn't be able to bus it. Things have been going pretty smooth. As far as the fence is concerned, the teams come in, they warm, they have nowhere to warm up. They warm up in our back of our fields, the Little League's back of their fields. I, I would have loved to have seen, and I shouldn't have said this before, that a deal worked out to where we could've got the Krech property to the south, because we could've put a parking lot in there, you guys, town could've made a park, even if the department could've made an offer, bought that property. You could've entered from 141st, drove all the way, had a lot on the north side, we walked from there, through the Little League, softball would've been a perfect setup. Whatever, it's probably not gonna happen, so in the meantime, we just gotta keep moving forward as much as we can. There's, we're never gonna be able to please everybody. We're not putting on a show. I, I've talked to you before, I've talked to everybody in this room before. Most people don't be, if somebody's gonna sit there and start screaming and yelling at our people that are volunteering, I'm gonna get a little bit defensive, I'm not gonna deny that.
So, so I guess, you know, coming out of what, what Dave said and what you guys are saying is, let's just follow through on what was said.
Well, that's what we're gonna do. We're gonna make sure that the Police Department gets this schedule, we'll print up a tournament schedule, we'll handle, if I have to go down, we'll hand it to the neighbors.
Yeah, enhance communication with everyone and see if we can make this thing work a little bit.
Sure, I get it, and, and we will try to do it better, if that's the case, we'll try to do a better job. You're not good enough to, to help with this. I mean, I can't sit there and ask people to move in the street, there's, there's nothing you can do about that. You, the, the private individuals that own the property can't. They can put a sawhorse out, they can put dibs chair, something, that's what people do in, in the middle of it.
Thank you, Mark. Okay. Tim, we did talk about the speed bumps or speed humps in that neighborhood. Have we ever been able to make any progress on like temporary structures to put in there?
We, I thought we looked into it, and then, I mean, we actually have some temporary speed bumps from when we did the roundabout, when we rerouted the traffic around through the back roads.
Can you work with that to like maybe locate some placement of those, like for when they're, they are busy there, that at least cars are driving at a responsible speed? Is that something we can look at? I mean, I think that's a pretty reasonable request.
So, we would have to put them up and down, or up for the summer, or...
Yeah, like, I don't know...
I mean, they gotta be...
For the season.
Oh, for, for the season.
Yeah, so, you know, I don't know when they start and when they finish, but just looking at something temporary is a way to help protect the residents a little bit.
Yeah, we can, I mean, I think that they kind of, we looked at it before, but I mean, if we can give it a try, we, like I said, we have, I believe those things are about eight foot long, and I think I have, I mean, we have, I got a pallet of, they're, you know, they're three inches tall, and I mean, they anchor down with a piece of rebar through the asphalt, so they don't really do any damage or anything to the road, and we can throw a couple down and see if it helps.
It wouldn't hurt to try.
I'd sort of try.
It's a pretty simple thing, so...
Yeah, we can give it a try, I mean, like I said, we have them, we have them in, at the public works, our pallet, so I don't know where we would try them, or just on 134th, that road going to the ball field, or...
Maybe, maybe going to the park.
I think a lot, I think a lot of the speeding is the Osborne Road, is, I don't know, I mean, I think a lot of speeding problems is more on Osborne, not the side roads, but...
Yeah, I'll second that. Our road, I don't think the speeding is bad at all. If anything, it would be nice. And that could be just some residents that live in, obviously, so...
All right. Tracy, name and address?
Tracy, I have to go, 13436 Osborne Street, and I just want to say, I'm not speaking as a school board member, speaking as a usually town resident.
But you're always a school board.
I know, I am.
Never escape.
I, I just, I just wanna let softball know, I mean, the first year they had their tournament, it was a good show, it was a shock, I think, because it was huge. They've improved, it all improved. There was a lady on golf cart, Kathleen, picking up garbage. Speed bumps on Osborne, just to slow them down, 'cause when they see nobody's on 134th, they just, they don't stop, they go and they turn.
And get the best parking spot.
Yeah, I mean, my husband and I, we've directed them, 'cause you can't get three cars in between me and my neighbor's driveway, we've directed them to park, that way we can get at least three cars in. Or they can park till if I have somebody come, there's still a spot. It's improved, it's not getting worse, it's improved. People just have to work together and listen. It's a positive thing, it's for the kids. But, I mean, speed bumps, I think that would just slow everybody down, it all works.
Yeah, it wouldn't hurt to try, you know, something, something to kind of...
But, everything has improved. I mean, they were parking out in my yard this last year, and I didn't really have to pick up garbage this last year, so...
Now, thank you, Tracy. I was a...
Yeah, before I was...
Is there any other public comment? See, you got your chance to speak.
All right, I am Stephanie Patton, I just bought a house on 101336 Edison Street on January 12th. I am the neighbor of Doug Ferguson and Elizabeth Cohen, sure you guys are a little bit aware of them. I have had all of them trespass from my property, I've had them remove their stuff, I've asked them 100 times, because I now do have the property line of what I own, and got told by police if they don't move it within an hour, I am legally allowed to move it, so I put up a snow fence. Going down, I have pictures to show you of what it looked like, I woke up next morning to the stuff thrown back on my property. So, I called the police, and I wanted to know, I have you guys there, which they've been amazing in helping us everything. So, I basically asked, you know, is my property, can I take it? Can it be moved? So, I want it gone, 'cause they're just gonna continue to throw it. So, we moved it out of there. The landlord does wanna evict them, but they do have 10 kids, so we feel bad for them. They've now threatened my five-year-old child with their children, if they're gonna jump them if they see them outside. I've had to purchase a firearm, and I've never had to do that. I am a single mom by myself with a five-year-old in your town. I'm thankful to these neighbors right here, Earl, I probably would've left that home with my mom. I, I found him last night at 1 o'clock in the morning staring at my house. I don't feel comfortable, I know he has plenty of felony charges, plenty. I have people that would, that would like to speak, that's happened to their family with him. I can't, you can't have a civil conversation with the people, they just wanna yell.
During comment days?
So, when she had the surveyors come out and stake it, he pulled out her stakes out of her ground, and threw them in the net to their neighbors.
I was there while it happened, part of the...
I didn't want to go get the stake, it's not my right, I want the police to see that. He was mumbling, "I'm a bully, he's a bully, he's on their side." So, they did have him go get my stake back. So, then I've got everyone trespassed, I have no trespassing signs, and now today I wake up, I don't know if I could bring this up to you. Can I bring this up to you? I found a stake in the middle of my yard, and it is not my stake, all my stakes are still present, along with my no trespassing sign destroyed.
This all happened today, Stephanie?
This has been happening, cops have been at my house all weekend.
This was hap, this hap, this happened all, all year last year, this guy's...
Mark, we'll give you a chance in just a minute, I will let her...
I'm just gonna let you guys look at these, these are just, these are my plot surveys and all of that. I did have a dispute with the old landlord, Oleg, I don't know if you guys are familiar with him. He just bought it, I fought while my closing costs for the extra 18 feet, and they don't wanna abide by that, so I think that's what kind of made them upset with me to where now they, they won't leave me alone. I had to have all of these neighbors come over to actually help me remain calm, because I, I'm scared. I don't know what this man...
They've tried to off of all of our properties in the area. Cubos got them trespassing.
He's trespassed from True Value, from Liquor Store, from...
Ryan Cubos' property.
From Cubos' properties, which I heard of the police, like, he's...
So, if all this has taken place, I mean, we're obviously not law enforcement officers up here.
And they told me I need to speak to you guys.
Correct.
I tried, I tried...
I saw her come, I saw her come in and put it on public records.
But who told you to come speak with us and it's not being taken care of by law enforcement?
They, yeah.
The way that they can only do so much, this guy, most of them report them on that.
And I also do have a question, is it legal for eight kids and two adults to be living in a three-bedroom house?
There's no law against it.
No.
They won't talk about that, okay?
They got charged and throwing a brick at me.
Yeah.
It sounds to me like we have a problem, and, and I've gone over this before in here, and it really upsets me that the lack of accountability in the prosecutor's office in this county, in the court system, where they just run them through and run them out. I have private citizens like you...
And they often never pay rent.
That our cops could go and arrest them 50 times and are gonna let them out 50 times. And they're just gonna get what they need. It's ridiculous. That's why it's important, it's important for people to, to take note of this, and when a prosecutor's up for reelection, to vote them out. Okay, I don't wanna be political up here, but this stuff is a product of lazy prosecution, and it has to stop, or else people like you have your lives in danger and your private property in danger from things that you didn't necessarily cause, and there's criminal acts being committed upon you.
Yes, and I wasn't rude, I asked them to remove their stuff themselves, and they were very, very rude to where me and Megan had to go, I said, "Let's leave, we need to call the police."
This sounds like some type of harassment. Dave, can you comment on it?
You tried, there's all kinds of...
I mean, I'm scared to let my own son play on his land.
Problems here, intimidation, harassment.
So, you put up cameras, didn't you?
I, I have not put up cameras yet, I, I just got the cameras along with the gun, which is still on delay, so, I'm just scared for my safety, and if they were not here, I would no longer be in this house.
Well, I'm, I'm pleased that your neighbors are looking out for you, and, and I know one guy that if you got Forrest Clements looking out for you, you got Jimmy looking out for you.
Yeah, he was one that stopped that place for me.
Well, I, I don't live there.
Would you like to comment?
Yeah. The first time I met, Space Jam...
And by the way, it's good to see you. I haven't seen you in a while, and I always like to run into you and talk to you, so...
Right.
The floor is yours, Forrest.
As I'm going back to go visit Big Jim, hang out with him, he stood in the middle of the road with his stroller and the kids, the kids have, don't, have no shoes on whatsoever and that, and he swings the golf club at my truck. So, my buddy Josh was behind me, and as he runs past my truck, he's holding a phone, video recording me. I'm like, "Dude, what is your major malfunction?" And he swings the club at Josh's car, and Josh comes out, Officer Kidd comes flying down the road, and he says, "I got this, you guys go." And they arrest him and that, and they, he just...
I don't know if many people would wanna swing a golf club at you, Forrest. You would think, not that smart.
That's what it's gonna take, Gas, but, you know, it's, that's how I met this guy. I don't know him from Adam, and he's just a loose cannon. He even stood in front of Big Jim's house and stared at him while he was in his wheelchair. Jim's like, "Can I help you?" And he felt uncomfortable with him, but he's just out there. Carl, what, what can we do here? I mean...
Well, pretty much everybody's pretty familiar with...
Space Jam or whatever.
What's going on, and these folks have said we've made many, many arrests.
Forty-seven in one month.
All charges are still pending in the court system, including traffic arrests that are unrelated to the neighborhood problems. I would add that the Police Department is also being harassed.
Right.
Most daily.
Bad.
And written communications.
Kids around mason people for no reason.
Their kid got maced, she has got maced by the...
He get maced?
Mased, yeah, masoned by the road.
Five, third, so, so Carl, you've made, how many arrests?
Many, many, I couldn't even really give you an honest number. Not all of them were related to neighborhood problems, some of them were just related to other criminal arrests, traffic arrests.
Stealing from the dollar store.
As these individuals have indicated, he's been trespassed from numerous properties, but again, turns around and accuses the police of wrongdoing, and all of those, he's, he's been trespassed from just about every business, intersection on 133 Morris. With that being said, you know, there's, there's things that we can't do things about, you know, freedom of speech, freedom of whatever, unless there's protection orders in place. I know some people have tried to get protection orders through the courts and have been denied.
But what about macing individuals when they're just walking down the road?
Well, that's of course against the law.
Yeah. Without leaving the stake out, or the...
The other issue we face is when the police arrive, we have two large groups of people, everybody screaming and yelling and cussing and pointing a finger, so we need, we need proof, we need evidence from one side or the other that these things have occurred. We've asked everybody to videotape, so at least we have that solid evidence of what actually occurred, and there's no dispute about it, the prosecutors can actually take charges. Because if we have just two groups of people and everybody's got a different story of what happened, prosecutors aren't gonna be able to take a charge. So, we've asked that, and we've, we've been successful in some cases. You know, we, we can't, we can't, we brought up the children, we brought up the house, DCS has been involved with this family numerous times. It's totally 100 percent their job to determine the livelihoods of those children, not ours. So, you know...
So, this comes down to, the young lady here should definitely get those cameras activated.
Absolutely, I mean, it's not always the best answer, but, you know, I don't have any problems at my house where I live, and I got 10 cameras on my house.
Yeah, I don't, I don't feel comfortable.
That's just the way of life, that's just how it is.
Yeah.
You know, if somebody does me wrong, I wanna be able to prove, well, as a police officer especially, I wanna be able to prove that what they're saying is not true, and these are the facts.
Yeah, well, my mom is a lawyer, but the thing is, they, they do do drugs, so they're out at 3, 4, 5 o'clock in the morning, I'm a single mom that works 9 to 5, I'm sleeping. Last night I'm woken up to him pounding, throwing stuff all over the yard, and then coming and standing and staring at my house. I'm a little iffy, my god, my five-year-old kid sleeping.
And just would, would add, and I don't care how ridiculous it seems to you, you call the police every time.
Call them every time.
Don't deal with it, don't try to deal with it, don't confront these people, call the police.
Report.
If we come there 50 times, and out of those 50 times we can't do anything, it doesn't do anything, it doesn't matter. We came fifty times to do our job to respond, to resolve the issue.
Well, what, what borderlines are common nuisance?
Yeah.
There's no common, common nuisance is only about drugs.
Well, I mean, cars are in and out, traffic, get the cameras.
I gotta get the cameras. I gotta get them back. I don't feel safe in that town.
Even years ago, the state of Indiana even changed the public intoxication law and the disorderly conduct law. You can actually be intoxicated in public. In Indiana. It's all about the dangers you're creating. Well, so what I'm getting at is, you know, even disorderly conduct, just because somebody's walking down the road, um, saying things and using profanity, that, that isn't necessarily an arrestable offense. Freedom of speech.
What about threatening us? And I have it on video.
Again, this.
I know their kids are gonna jump like five-year-old kids.
This has to be.
I had it on video. I forwarded it over, but then Corbin hurt his hand. So I don't know what's going on with it. But he livestreamed it while in front of my house and I screen recorded it and emailed it over. Walking in front of my house in the middle of the night saying he had a hatchet and a knife and.
With specific incidents, we can deal with those. Police department, not here.
Like that's the thing. It's like every time we call, we're always told there's nothing they can do. Well, there's nothing for intimidation. There's nothing for press. When we have everything.
Every situation is different. And intimidation has to be a threat that he can carry out. Not just him walking down the street saying stupid stuff.
But him walking past our house and saying, I have a hatchet.
Video recording.
I'll kick in their door at six A.M. and put it between their skull and we have it on camera, them walking past our home.
And you say this is a case that is still pending in your mind?
I don't know what's going on with it. Cause right after I started, I had Corbin first hand or something. So, but then there was another one where he stood in the backyard screaming at us in the middle of the night, making threats. I'll drag you in the woods. I sat out there and recorded it. Then when the police come, there was nothing that they could do about it.
Well, without knowing the specific incidents and exactly what was said, I can't, obviously I can't answer.
Well, yeah.
But if we can look at those, if I can look at those specific incidents, then I can give you an answer.
If you could.
Carl, I mean, this, this lady here is claiming to have video evidence of these things. And yourself as a detective, is this something that you can follow up on here? And it, a little follow through?
Sure.
Is there something on?
I too watch all of the livestream videos, looking for things that can be done with them. But people know what that fine line is, okay? And they walk that line, knowing that as long as they don't cross that line, they're not gonna get charged and they're not gonna go to jail.
And they know that prosecutors all around the country are lazy as lazy can be with this stuff.
You're right.
We have something pending specifically, then.
I couldn't imagine being a cop.
Personally.
Especially after you arrest them three times in one room.
And then in that move.
Couple of houses on that side of the road.
Um, Ole, and then Ole's and then I got.
He can't, the landlord, he isn't gonna do anything. He really can't because of two, two sets of.
Yeah.
This young lady had a comment here. Your name again, please.
My name is Megan Fusco and I live at one three three Seven Bell Street, two streets back from where Miss Stephanie Patton lives, on the first street on the left in the subdivision. And I just wanted to say on record that I've been harassed by this man as well, myself and my fiance with his children, walking up and down the road. I have heard also, again, rumors of not, of him not being able to be by the liquor store where I am at that dividing street of the side street and my street, Bell Street. I've also caught this man walk on my fiance and I's property to cut through, to get through to that street. And we've approached him saying, please don't walk through our property. You know, this is uncomfortable. You're making us feel uncomfortable. And he's just went off and went crazy like he does to her. But I just wanted to say on record that we were harassed as well. Not that, not to the extent of that, but just with him coming and thinking that he could walk through our property to kind of cut through streets. So that's all I wanted to know.
And she just moved in. We've all lived in.
And I've been there at that residence, sir, for three years.
Make and deal with it. I'm more of, I'm little.
When you're riding that storm.
I'm little and he is right there.
This, this is pretty disgusting to, to hear about this stuff.
I love Cedar Lake. This is amazing.
And Carl, could you please follow up on the ones that you have the video evidence? I mean, something's gotta be done here.
And we live there. We do hear that from them. And we know, the police has done everything that they can do. We understand.
They think we're only doing certain things.
You put charges against someone, you filed, uh, complaints or something.
Complaints.
I tried to.
I appreciate you guys coming and expressing this tonight. I mean, we're, we're obviously not law enforcement officers and there's nothing that this body can do, but I'm glad that you're working with our police department. Continue. Every time something happens, like Carl said, call the police. Even if you think it's petty, make a record of it. Every time. Because the more records you make, the better chance that you have of a prosecutor actually following up on something and is actually getting into the court system and getting charges that aren't just filed, the charges that.
I got his golf club, by the way.
Could you do a petition?
Can we get a petition going?
Is that a possibility? A petition isn't gonna do anything.
No.
Like enforcement of law or moving something through the courts. Um, the courts were closed for almost a year, basically.
Right.
And they've been leaning on this COVID excuse forever. And, uh, which I think is another bunch of hogwash, but that's for another subject. But, um, uh, yeah, just keep at this. Be diligent. Make sure that the police, every time something happens, are aware because some, something could escalate if one of you are involved or gets emotional. They could actually put it back on you. So don't let that happen. Stay calm and, and call these people and they'll, they'll respond. They know, uh, the two people you described quite well.
And I would say, incident one, these cases like intimidation, the mace, uh, the threat, go to the Lake County prosecutor. Don't let up on them. Call them there, find out what prosecutor's assigned to it. Ask if they have anyone in victim services that can keep you abreast of the veil, uh, the bond here. You know, you have to speak in court easily for that. Um, when it does go before, even if you have to take off work because of the change, just be there. Just really let victims speak. Um, and just don't let up on the prosecutor's office. I, I wouldn't put too much faith in that they're gonna contact you.
Yeah.
So they, you file intimidation, harassment and, um, the deputy chief with the chief. Those cases with the prosecutor's office, like, I wouldn't count on them contacting you. Just keep calling, please, in charge of my case. I wanna talk with someone who has been contacted by the prosecutor.
Okay. And then I do have one more question. My son will be riding their bus this year. He is starting kindergarten on McCarthy. How do I go about that? I don't want him on the same school bus as those kids.
I don't know for sure. I think I would go to the school.
Go to the school.
But they don't press against him?
Yeah, they're, they're gonna jump him when I'm not around.
Yeah, try, try to get a, a meeting with like a principal or a counselor or somebody.
Yeah, they know how to go about that. My dad has said about that.
That's what I think they do there.
Yeah. And, uh, see Crown Point Schools, the security director is actually a former police chief here, Dave Colson. Dave might be a good guy to talk to.
Okay, perfect. Well, thank you guys again so much.
Hey Forrest, how rich I said a lot, okay?
All right.
We appreciate it, buddy.
Take care. I'll talk to you later.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Just call me Randy.
Free.
I'm just one of your neighbors here, right? I mean, it's just what we do.
I mean, I grew up.
Any, I don't wanna stop the conversation, but are there any other public comments, sir?
Nothing like that. I just.
Gary Vernon?
Yeah.
Yeah, Gary Vernon, seventy-three twenty-five West one hundred and twenty-eight. I bought the house in October. And you got a light, a hilltop and one hundred and forty-eighth place. From there up, you got nothing. How many go like that? Hard to come in and out. You can't see anything. At nighttime, during day, it's hard to see somebody coming up or down. And I'm also trying to get the property, actually, to get four lots. Someone to have all that area and there's no lights up there. It's pretty rough. I got a picture over here I can show you.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure the lights that you describe are actually owned by Nipco.
Are they?
Yeah, those are Nipco lights.
But it's pretty dark over there.
Cause the only streets that we have lit in town are the main Borough Fair.
You can't drive most of them from the Nipco.
Would you, would you, would you, would you? My son has one out front of his house. Is there a police anywhere around?
There's a pole right across.
Costs like twenty, about four dollars a month. And they'll put it right up on it if you want, to mark the dog, right on Nipco.
Yeah, so that would be in Nipco. Yeah. Can, Kelly, do you have a, do you have a contact that you can give to this gentleman? So it's pretty bad.
It's just Nipco. It's a Nipco website.
So a street light, right?
Yeah, request a street light.
And it's just it online. I'm just trying to, Nipco was. Yeah, I know what they're talking about. Right around. Is he very likely, but I've never ate more than three.
For your service.
Thank you. And you can get different degrees of health rating. So if you're curious, um, you live in South Shore subdivision, okay? If you go down Bryant Street, my son has an apartment right on his house. If you go down the east street, they got their bad plan. You can see Elder Bryant. My son's facing the opposite street to me and it's on a cross street from him and life of mine.
You know, I, I learned something here. I didn't learn you to do that.
Yeah. We have it at the shop. You don't want, you don't.
They just stick around. Is there any other public comments?
Patrol and check.
Any other public comments?
What do you mean?
Public comments, Mark, when you do the lines.
Do you have a, do you have a little area?
Okay. Well, I thank, thank you for everyone's patience here tonight and for participating in your government. And, uh, we hope that these folks here can feel a relief from the harassment. Uh, our next town council public meeting is Tuesday, April fifth, at seven P.M.